Okay, I would, are we good?
Good then.
Yeah. Like to call to order the meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee at nine ten AM on July tenth twenty twenty five. To kick things off, I don't think we have anyone online, doesn't look like it. So we don't have any public comment today. And we can start by going through, I'll actually. Say, I guess. I don't have a specific chairman's report for today. The main goal today is to conduct our summer workshop. So looking forward to that. And then. Do I have? So do we have?
We have reports from the different subcommittees.
No, but do we have warrants to go through?
We don't have.
Okay, I didn't.
No, we're doing the summer signing process, so they're coming out almost every other.
Right, and we're deciding over moment, okay, perfect. All right, so then a couple of facility, some committee reports. So Teresa's not here, John?
I think Pamela will run with this. I listened to it while I was on vacation, so I was walking through the city streets, but I have a.
That was good for you.
But you'll do a better job than I would.
I think we reported last time we're in the process of obtaining the designer. So we issued the request for services, we held a walk through on the last day of school. That's just the opportunity for all of the potentially interested designers who intend to put in a bid to come and see the facility. We had really big turnout for that. When we met on, what was the twenty fourth? They just took us through the process of what the remainder of the summer would look like in terms of hiring, hiring the designer. So we have meetings coming up on the twenty second to review proposals that have come in. And a subcommittee that's going to work prior to that to do a deep draft and report out to the full committee on the twenty second. Then we're scheduled to go before the MSBA on July the twenty ninth for our initial meeting. And our final meeting is needed on August twelfth. So I think the thing we just need to remember with this is of those who will apply to be our designer, the MSBA will assign one to us. Our subcommittee, which is myself, Michelle and Gordon Brewster, will go with our OPM. Go, we go online now, will attend the meeting of MSBA and advocate for the choice of the group. We're fairly confident we can make a good case. We successful last time. Sometimes I think what we were, what we've learned is that the MSBA tries to get a new designer an opportunity, but they also keep the tires and make sure the designer we're going with isn't overloaded and isn't prepared to do them. So the long story short, we should have a designer identified and contracted by mid-August and ready to open up the year with some community meetings and some real work on feasibility study. So next year, that'll, that's in my notes later. Big focus of next year is going to be feasibility study on the different potential configurations.
Great.
So exciting.
Yeah. Finance Committee?
We have not met.
To make a quick comment about the other meeting that we had.
Oh, yeah, that's, so yes, we did have the number crunching group after we closed school year. And that was basically to start looking ahead for this coming year. And so no, no decisions were made, no recommendations made, no substantive. It was mostly, you know, making sure that we have a few new members. For example, Essex Select Board Chair, you know, all the we will be having a new Manchester Administrator, obviously. That, that person was not there, going by his name, sorry. Great replacement.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
So anyway, it was, it was more about, you know, what, what are the, what are the big things that we want to focus on over the next year, we think we'll need to coordinate on? And so nothing real new. You know, most of the issues that we've already been hearing about and talking about then resurfaced. You know, I think there is one thing that I came away with that might be a little bit new is that, you know, neither town seems interested in doing a kind of multi-year override or correction. So it looks like, you know, in terms of planning process, you know, we, in terms of our budget, we're really looking at a year to year.
Why is that?
Um, that's a good question.
I mean, the year to year doesn't seem to work very well.
Yeah, I feel a bit of frustration on that, but I think part of, you know, part of the big question this year and, and, you know, and brought it up a little bit, you know, is, is whether or not we can, you know, keep under like three and a half percent, right? So a lot of it's going to depend on health insurance, a lot of it's going to depend on, you know, things that we know are kind of wild card factors. And we'll have to see how they play out in the next several months. But, you know, I think both towns are like, well, you know, we're, we pay the bills that we're, we're charged with this year. So I think that's kind of the attitude both towns are taking at this point. And whether or not we trigger an override, we'll just have to see where an override need. We'll just have to see how that plays out as we get into it. But I think, you know, fundamentally, from my perspective, you know, this meeting was mostly about, hey, look, let's be sure we're ready to start this engagement early rather than, you know, waiting until the, to the last month or two. And so hopefully, you know, just establishing that relationship and that engagement will be productive for us. But, but yeah, nothing substantive came out of it, you know, nothing in terms of direction. So it's, it's more about, all right, let's be sure we're all aware of what we care about. And I wouldn't say there was anything new in that list, but Andy can fill that in if Chris.
I thought the requests were the same as they've been in the past. We can probably talk in our discussion of the year about what we want to do with the requests and how we want to approach that.
Right.
And have a game.
So Policy Subcommittee, you guys, Matt, I believe.
We did meet, we've been waiting through the language of updated technology policies. Two main points as we go into the conversation, one being that the earlier we can make a decision one way about or another about these, the better. So definitely by our next meeting, but preferably today, we'll be able to get through most of it so that our principals can roll these out at a professional development days before the school year starts. The other point is that most of these policies were written about twenty years ago. Some of them are updated sort of like ten, fifteen years ago. So a lot of the updates here reflect the changing landscape of technology and how people are using technology and what people are using technology for. So it looks like a ton of changes, but really it is mostly just digging into sort of how technology has changed and how teacher and student use of technology is changing and continues to change.
Does it address AI?
It does not address AI, no.
So it was in our packet that you have a chance to go through on the back?
Right.
Not really, yeah.
I've got copies just for reference.
It does not address AI specifically. It does sort of broadly address what appropriate uses of technology are for school purposes and what our networks can be used for, what our devices can be used for, that sort of thing. How teachers communicate with students. Sort of our social media. From our social, social media base. Anyway, the only feedback that we had received from the, on these was from Jake. Jake, we did go through your points. There was no strong feelings in either direction about them as we sort of dug into it, though. Pam had noted and we agreed that in order to change any of the language that was proposed by MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committee, it would either need to go to our legal or go back to MASC and ask them how they had come up with that specific wordage or that specific point or why they included certain legal references and didn't include others. So we did ultimately recommend to go with the MASC wording on these. We also agreed that we would like to better understand how MASC arrives at this wording and how they make the decisions around what vetting process goes into it, how they make decisions around exactly what their policies and their recommended policies would be. So we were going to look into having an MASC rep sort of meet with us or walk us through that. That also led to a discussion of sort of our full policy manual, which has not been reviewed. And we did the last full audit, I think in like eleven, twelve. Yep. And so at some point, we would like to tackle a full policy manual review with MASC support. Teresa made the point that that would be very good for us to get into while we have Pam because Pam is the only one left in the district with the institutional knowledge that goes back to, the last one standing. Goes back that far. And so we were in support of that. But regardless, we bring today the policies and updates that you all received in your packet or discussion and potentially for vote.
Sounds good. Is this something that we want to tackle now or?
I think it's good as part of the business meeting because that's the official process we need, needed to go through. I would say looking for feedback and I think.
But now in the agenda, do we want to wait?
I would do it now.
Okay.
Yeah, while we're here and then.
Do you have anything to add to that?
I would say the only, I think you said it, but I'm not sure I heard it. Is that I would recommend that we, MASC, when we did it back twelve years ago, fifteen years ago, MASC came in and they will do the analysis of our book against their recommended policies and then sit with the policy subcommittee for each subsection and then make recommendations. And when we're in that process, that's when we can ask a lot of the clarifying questions about how they got to something. You know, they're here and serving school committees. So they're giving you their recommendation about what's in the best interest of the district from the school committee's perspective. In our book, we do have some homegrown policies. There are some that are more appropriate to be homegrown, something like the wellness policy that there's a T working on or our reserves policy. There won't be boilerplate for that. So that's the process by which we can sort through. What are the boilerplate policies that we should have just to be organized appropriately and have the right points of reference in the book? And what are the ones that need to become more localized? And then they can support you as school committee members in making decisions. There are some that will end up kicking back during that process to school based.
Can I ask you a question? Can you just, you know, because getting to newer members, can you talk just about a bit more about what MASC is? And I don't know. Why they even send out these recommendations versus, you know, another group, right? And kind of what their level of expertise is around this or, you know, who do they consult? Do we know any of that information?
Well, I know.
Like, I guess what I'm asking, right? Are they the experts kind of on this and do they?
Well, they have a team that put the template book together. Right, so I'm assuming their team includes former school committee members because that's who acts as your rep. They have legal counsel and it goes through their vetting process. We have contracted with them to be the host of our manual and we've contracted with them in the past to be the guide for us to develop the manual.
Right.
So they're pulling on their resources. So it's Mass Association of School Committees and they're, we are member, we are members of that organization. And this is just one of the services that they provide. So we really.
Do they do like a majority of the school districts?
They do significant for the school districts.
Got you. Okay.
Yep. And if it's something that you wanted to move away from, you could certainly, I don't think we have bandwidth to keep it in house right now. And the way this particular packet came up was they send updated policies for your review. And I had given it only last fall to the tech team to say, you know, could you go through these from the perspective of people who, whose work is governed by this and let us know, let me know if there's anything that is problematic or concern similar to what we're doing now that we can reach out and get clarifications on. So this, they came back with this packet as the recommendation with the only change, and I think that was what I wanted to add is to make sure that, I think when we think about what's very different in these policies or what we want to make sure you're aware of is the, it's the policy G B E E, the personal use of technology. And it's just the closing statement that says use of cell phones and electronic communication devices or other school district owned or personally owned in a matter that violates MRC policies will result in discipline up to and including a discharge in referral to law enforcement. So we've had a growing concern. This comes from we've had a growing concern about people who, while you, while using good intent are using their personal cell phones for texting with students or families and potentially giving out their phone number. Those, if, if we choose to communicate that way, we need to have a public record of it. So we are going to implement a tool called Parent Square at the beginning of the year so that if that's the preferred method of communication, it meets all of our requirements for monitoring communications and keeping records of communications for up to seven years. And it's just a platform that allows people to, to text, email, and I believe make phone calls without giving out their personal. So, so this is just giving us some language.
That's like from like teacher to parent communication, teacher to.
Teacher to student is a, and coach to student, I think is a big area of concern for us. The athletics department maintains a record of that. Yep.
But that's different than engaging launch person.
No.
This is saying is if teachers are in violation.
Inappropriate texting going on between like a coach and a student athlete or different things like that because they have direct, they have their phone numbers, right? Or anything else that school relate?
But would this apply to students too, if a student does sexting or something on, on their phone in school, on school grounds? Would that covering that too?
So no, it's just school employees.
This one's directly at school employees.
That's school employees, sorry.
It gives us the authority to act on boundaries issue. So if someone, so right now people would say, we don't have a policy. We don't, haven't been told directly. So if someone is engaging in that behavior, you have to start at a baseline of progressive discipline, even if it barely, you know.
Right.
This allows us to put into the, into the teacher manual clarity. It's a little bit, think about like, you're not supposed to have alcohol at school if you're an employee, right? And it's like, it's, we can act on that.
So we're on the same page here.
So this is basically going to set the baseline that we are giving you notice now that it is official and it is formal, that use of your cell phone.
You don't get on your improvement plan because we noticed that you're. Yeah.
So is that, is that the only change then from MASC? Is that the only difference from the MASC template?
Yep, this is the, this is above and beyond the MASC template.
I think this is really, I, I appreciate this and I especially feel like when the first time that I read this, I couldn't wrap my head around what some of these changes look like in practice. And then I noticed that after a field trip that my middle schooler had gone on, there were like group texts set up so that the teachers could keep track of the groups of kids who were on their own. And I went and deleted from his phone, the teacher contact and the thread because for his own protection, thinking to myself like, if somebody gets my kid's phone and sees that there's a teacher in it and decides that they're going to mess with him and text the teacher from his phone. And like, this is, this is just better kept under lock and key. This is much better when the right people have access to the right information. I mean, not that anything was.
No, and I think there's a lot of positive intent and, you know, kind of, the conversation started a lot around athletics because coaches' primary way of communicating with their teams is to text them to let them know practices at this time or it's changed. Or, you know, bring this, bring this to the meat, et cetera, et cetera. And conversations among ADs had come, had started. And they were looking at and using what we thought we were going to be able to use, which is a tool that's very much branded for sports. We didn't think it would, we were hoping they would work with us on the branding as part of a pilot, but they're not ready to do that yet. So we didn't think something that calls SportsU would be a good fit for an elementary classroom communication tool. So we went back out and investigated Parent Square and we're going to do a trade off of reducing our Zoom expenditures to, to pay for the Parent Square account and take the hit there. So this has come up, if you've served on any hiring committees, we ask a question to incoming administrators about managing reports about inappropriate texting or text. So it, it's something that's been kind of developed against a concern for a while. And we want to take the opportunity to put in some language that would give principals a communication tool and then an authority tool. So I just wanted to flag, flag that to make sure, because our conversation yesterday, we didn't highlight that that was a key difference. So I just want to make sure everything's there.
But I am with that because I noticed that it says, when interacting with students online, group interactions are encouraged and should include your staff members. That is, that's what you're saying if a coach is just trying to tell.
They have to include the AD for the communication.
What if you just want classroom teaching?
We can include principal with the new tool people can watch.
The new tool would give teachers the flexibility if they needed to do something like Kate described on a field trip, they would do it, be able to do it just through this.
And again, all the credit for the work on this goes to the tech team and Heather and Michelle. Meet with them regularly and so then part of their work.
So I guess if you, I mean, maybe we'll just go around real quick. I guess first off, does we want to try to vote on this today? Did everyone sort of get a chance in general to review it? And then I guess we can go around quickly. So.
You want to talk about the vote a little bit? And you could do two things. We could do first read today with a second read on the nineteenth, or you could vote because they're primarily updates to dispatch with the two reads and go with the single read in, in recommendation today. But that would be two different votes. We're good either way, as long as we're, we're just hoping to be done by the nineteenth.
Does anything on here need to go to the association? Are we worried?
I can say that we are all in agreement, including the association, that some, a tool like this and protections and notifications like this for teachers is something we're interested in. They were a part of the discussions about the tool in SportsU. And I'd actually go a step further and say it's also the authority of this group and, and the administrators kind of recommend things that we think are in the best interest. So I don't know that all will be in agreement with it, but I think this also reminds me of when, you know, at one point you didn't need to have a policy about not taking kids in your car. Right now we have to have a policy down. So I think it's kind of in that.
Yeah. So I can just kind of start real quick, you know, reviewing this, there was, like Kate said, there was definitely some errors that kind of, I don't know, I started to think about, but in general, you know, this was well thought out by, you know, a group that's been doing this for a while. These are just updates and, you know, I tend to lean towards like what the recommendations are with these things versus saying, oh, well, maybe we could do it a bit different here. So, and this is also something where if we, you know, are putting in these policies and something maybe doesn't work well for us, we can always update it after we try it. So, you know, I'm, personally, I'm fine with moving forward and, you know, voting on this today so that we can just simply get it out there and make sure that we're ready to implement a couple of these things by the time school starts. But that's, so that's how I feel.
Yeah, we agree with that.
I agree, it is the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee that we do approve these changes. Jake, I will say that I agreed with your point about the budget reference. But the conversation that we then had was, well, why would we not include? Trying to remember where it was so that I can.
And that was MASC that you put there?
It was. So what are you, so it says that it's about.
Which one was it?
Technology. Oh, yeah. I J N D, the school committee intends to support such use of appropriate budgetary allocations, providing for timely updates to technology as necessary. I had said, I don't know that anything about our budget needs to be in the policy manual. Teresa and Karen both pointed out that there are multiple other places in our policy manual where it is included. I think it was Heather had said, you know, interesting, why would you not want it in there? And I talked about the muddled waters. But then the point was brought up that having the line in there doesn't say that we will provide budgetary support. Says that we intend to, which then gives us a point of reference in our policy manual during budget discussions to sort of lean on. If we really feel like these updates are absolute necessity, we can point to this line and say like, we, you know, we said that we wanted.
In thinking about our conversation after, it's an access to policy. So to provide access as a committee with your responsibilities, funding the tools at an appropriate and current level provides the answer. So it's, it's a commitment to provide access and therefore establish a funding mechanism.
Got it? Did you get a chance to?
Yeah, I remember, I mean, I'm fine with what, there is the one comment goes back to what I said before. I'm trying to see, I think maybe it's J I C J, student use of technology in school. Just from conversations I've had with my kids, I think we need to address AI. And, you know, as a lawyer, I'd probably argue, I can squeeze it in there. I can interpret, you know, use that is ethical and legal and whatever would include, you know, not plagiarizing, for example, because I don't do that's unethical, but I think that's something we should. Not to hold this up, but during this year, I'd like to see us address that engaged features and see that. Because my initial experience when I talked to teachers about it was, the first reaction was, oh, we're not going to allow kids, like for instance, in English class to do journals at home because they're just using chat GPT or whatever. So we're going to have them, and then we'll take up class time and have them write so that I can supervise what they're writing. At the same time, I have my, one of my kids saying, I see kids in the classroom using their phones, copying stuff and the teacher's just not there to see, which I get it, teachers can't have eyes on every single student, every single second. But it's out there, it's real. In my own professional world, we're increasing use of AI and it's being thrown at us from every direction possible to the point that you're unprofessional, that you're not learning how to use these tools because you're not being efficient.
Good news for you.
So, yeah.
Our whole year is our main strand in professional development this year is AI. And we teamed up with Europe AI, which is an organization out of MIT, being led, promoted, supported by the former commissioner, Jeff Riley. So I had connected with him on a, at a conference and from there we went. So that's all planned out and the focus is on bringing up our individual capacity around it. We started last year with the leadership team and having some conversations. And there's been small pockets of learning and study going on. If we talk about anything that we're preparing for, this is probably the one that I'm having a hard time getting my brain around as a school, as school districts are structured, how we move fast enough to keep up with how fast this school is going to change and move because schools are shortcut, one of our shortcomings and it's a strength and a weakness is we are slow to change, methodical about it, which creates stability. But something like this is going, I think, going to be incredibly disruptive and, and challenge our ability to move quicker. So it kind of keeps me up at night a little bit for all of the reasons that you mentioned, because people are all over the spectrum and their reaction to it. Last year, when we started talking about how to attack this at the, with the, what we call the cabinet or the leadership team, I had reached out to Colby, Colby's our attorney. We use Stone, Stone and Chandler Miller to say, is there a policy we should put in place? And at the time, the advice was, we don't know enough about this to write the legal policy that you're looking for. So we're going to have to hang on a little bit and see where this goes. So.
The department of that is doing a whole bunch of research too.
That's the other piece that we have been working with. We got ourselves on that task force this year. So Heather and the tech team have been representing us there. So we're getting a lot of first draft pieces that are coming out. So I think it's going to be a focus for us this year. We're also, you also mentioned the cell phone piece. We spent some time yesterday in our session reworking our language around our cell phone. I don't think we're going to ban, I think can be what they're calling it at the State House. We are looking to reintroduce our expectations and our school level. We are looking to reintroduce our expectations and our school level policies around away during the day. Except for at the high school, where I think they're going to maintain away during the day unless you're on your free period. So they're working on that now, we'll have new language to share it with everybody. That's a handbook level piece. The committee could always go with something more, you know, more overarching and more directive in terms, but I think we, everyone heard it last year, I think, initial reaction was we're not really sensing that there's a problem and our problem really comes from primarily at the secondary. Not all of us as adults being equally diligent in enforcing the policy and the commitment that we have. So I think you'll see a reintroduction of that and focus on AI.
Because the, the other thought I had is, whether this particular policy is, is the digital use form that is referenced there could be leveraged. So in other words, we could call out AI in the digital use form and thereby not have to disturb this policy document. Forward, but at least give ourselves the ability, because I think as a parent, shall we say, I would like to see that spelled out for kids because they know what it is, right? So even if we just reference something like that, but that includes AI, that's not something separate, it's part of your digital use.
And I think that developmentally, how that looks will be very different, obviously for elementary schoolers than for high schoolers, which is why letting our principals work through it makes a lot of sense because they can tailor sort of those rules specifically for their audience, because you're right, high schoolers will have, probably know a lot more about it than any of us.
So. Well, like my, last year was a sixth grader. She found it's actually easier in middle school. Why? Because it's harder for a teacher to detect and there are tools out there. I'll give you a concrete example, they were reading Harry Potter, they had to answer questions, well, she found chat G P T had all the answers she wanted. Like that. And I was like, what are you doing?
And that's.
They're, they're ahead of.
What we say, mom, it's harder, not harder.
Of us and some of the work that we're trying to do around our instructional practices. We need to shift our instructional practices, so it's not that easy to have AI be the responder, but AI be a partner and the work is more evaluating. So maybe the, the problem becomes evaluating the responses that AI gave you about Harry Potter to see if they're actually accurate with your reading of the book. That's where some of the work, that's why AI is going to tie to all of our PD and what we're trying to accomplish in this next version or this next step in our district improvement plan. And this is why it kind of keeps me up at night because the speed at which it's going, I don't, I don't know if we're built as institutions to keep up with it. So it's going to be, this is going to be one of our greatest challenges.
Yeah. I mean, the, the stuff's been around for a while though. I mean, I could have, decade ago, I mean, since the internet, I could go and look up and like give me, you know, a synopsis of Harry Potter and popped up and been to reader. Maybe in, AI is literally just giving kids like a little bit more specific or a little bit of a deeper dive. But this has been around since forever and had to deal with it for a while, but.
If you now write essays, so that's the issue. It's like, it's not just, if it were just a summary, I totally agree with you. What blows me away is you can literally say, you know, write me a response to this question about chapter three and Harry Potter. Yes. Sixth grader, and it will do that for you. So then.
And then you can say, now make it sound like a sixth grader.
Right.
Yeah. That's really hard for teachers, I get it. But I, I guess getting back to this, because I think that's what we're trying to do, right? I think this is a play, but let's consider whether somehow I want to get it out to kids in an age appropriate manner that, you know, responsible use of digital technology includes you subject to, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it's all of that.
Yep.
And that they have to also start thinking about this.
My, my, what I know is that the high school has been trying to address it through the academic integrity policy. And they've had some conversations at school council because it's on teachers' minutes too.
So we can definitely, so, but your concern is, again, we want to address this, but not specific to voting on these policies.
I don't want to hold it up and I know that that opens up another can of worms that will take more time, so I'm trying to be sensitive to that. And I think there's enough here that we can then leverage because this is pretty high level.
Yeah.
I have a tendency to agree with what you said, Chris, at the beginning about the advisory. The M A S C sounds beyond qualified to make advisory, like advise that we adopt these policies and we can beat them. I am excited about the AI work that the district is going to do with Jeff Riley and MIT, like that sounds like a fantastic avenue to try to address this concerns that you're raising moving forward. So I'm pleased that that's happening. I'm hoping, as I read through this, I didn't see any, personally see any glaring red flags. Sounds like Jake had a lot, so I actually would love to hear from Jake first and, and then.
We're going to hear from everyone, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, before, but like, for me personally, at this time, I, I, there's no red flags or any issues.
I wouldn't call a lot of what I did red flags, I'm more clarifying questions. And, you know, did we, did we address some things that I know are in conversation? So they're not, I wouldn't say the red flags, I wouldn't say hold this up because of my questions.
Okay.
But there may be things like the AI, like the cell phone ban, if the legislature doesn't, we may need to revisit some of these things as things develop, as technology develops. So mine were more clarification questions and one of them was, you know, this budgetary line, not a deal breaker, right? But I'm not in favor of putting budgetary statements in policy. So anyway, that, we've already talked about that one.
Because of budgetary, because it isn't guaranteed.
I, I, yeah, I mean, and it's so vague, it doesn't hold us to it anyway. So what's, what's the point of the policy, right? And we're going to be, we're going to be allocating for technology resources almost no matter what, right? So it, it, it doesn't, doesn't help staff with their work and all, right? It's, it's a, it's a nice commitment statement, but it's, it's just doesn't, doesn't help anybody. So my clarification question is just to, just to double check on them. I J N D has a, has a statement that, you know, when we take out, part of what these changes do is they take out a lot of detail. Right? So we had a whole pages on like expectations for webpages, if teachers create webpages, right? We take that out. And usually when we take that out, we make a statement to say, hey, the superintendent will work with, you know, the handbook or, you know, the tech team to create those expectations, right? So it's no longer at school committee, but it's on staff or it's on administration. So I just wanted to check, there is a statement like that in I J N D, but the way that the, the document that you sent us was laid out, that came after the webpage changes. I just wanted to make sure that that, that statement in I J N D, N D covers things like webpage expectations that you would take that on as the administration rather than school.
Yes, and I think it's been removed because we moved past those, it was very dated.
Yeah, no, I'm total, I'm totally good with that, I just want to make sure that.
So like something like Google Classroom Expectations for posting and making.
That would be covered by you, you're, you're perfect. That's, that's all, I just wanted to make sure, because the order just didn't feel.
That makes sense.
Okay, so the other thing that I asked about, and it may not have any impact on what we're doing here, but because I work with the state some, and whenever I do work with the state that involves creating a, a digital product, I'm required in the state department of education, and I believe other state agencies are required to make them accessible. And by accessible, I mean technical accessibility for like screen readers and that kind of thing. So I did see in K D C B, quote, high priority would be placed on such platforms to be inaccessible, unquote, but I didn't know if that meant section five oh eight accessibility, technical compliance, or just like, hey, they got to be funded.
Well, in what sense the word accessible was used?
Right, right. And at some point, we are going to be required to make all our stuff accessible.
What are you, what was your letters?
K D C B. Think I transcribed that right? But at some point, we. Yeah. So I don't know when we are going to be held to that. I know every public entity will be eventually.
We are. And our former website did not meet compliance, so.
That's part of the reason for.
One of the, well, they got bought out.
Yeah.
But with the buyout and the, or the change, I don't, yeah, the change of, we're getting that accessible with the readers. Google is all accessible. So we are already under that environment.
But that means everything that teachers are putting on Google should be accessible too. And I know that's work speak, that just by being on Google doesn't make it accessible. There's work the teachers have to do.
Talking with the tech team, I think there's slightly, I, I get really down, we need to define what accessibility is.
And, and again, that doesn't, I don't hold this up to define that, but I think that's work that needs to be done because we will be held accountable for it at some point. I don't know when. Or you're saying we are, but nobody's looking.
Well, I mean, I think in terms of the broad, in terms of bringing on new platforms that are publicly accessible, the platforms provide the accessibility. In terms of student product or communication with student from teachers, accessibility is driven by the student's identified needs. So it, the, the Google sheet itself, for instance, doesn't have to be accessible. It needs to be made accessible either by the liaison or the teacher for the student who needs the accessibility in the format. So that already exists because you need to make every book, every instructional tool accessible to students who need it in a different.
So I'd like clarification on that because that's not my understanding of it.
But again, not for.
Not for, not for this, but this is, you know, this is raising that flag of, you know, is there future work here that needs to be done? And if not, that's great. If, if what you're doing is already meeting that, great, but that's not my understanding of what it means to be accessible.
Tell me what you're thinking or what you're.
Because if, if a teacher creates a student facing document in Google, yes, they may make it so that their current students can access it, but what if a different student with a different, right? So, so there are technical, there is a root, there is a set of criteria that, that says, yes, this document is now accessible. If it doesn't, and it's like, I don't know, 20 different criteria, whatever, if it doesn't meet all those, then it's not accessible. Right? Even if it meets 10 of them, it's not considered accessible according to five oh eight.
So how is that? We don't need to.
Yeah, yeah, but future work. Future, all right. All right, the, the next question I had, I J N D B, which is a use of technology and instruction. I didn't see policy in this thing, it was like a program. So I just don't know what this section is doing. The only, the only thing that felt like policy was the last sentence that said, you know, students use technology in responsible, efficient, ethical and legal manner, which is later, which is somewhere else, right? In J I C J. So I just don't know what this use of technology and instruction is doing as a policy, like a program description. And, and if you're saying this is an M A S C language, how do they know what our program is? And do we agree with this description? I'm looking at I J N D B, use of technology and instruction. Yeah.
Sorry, I J N D.
B. D B.
B B.
D B.
It's just this.
Yeah, it's a short paragraph.
It's just purpose of it almost.
I did, it's not.
Yeah, feel, yeah, it's not a.
It's a broad, yeah, I think it's like a broad introduction to the section that then I J N D B is breaking it, broken down into I N J D B R. And then it's almost like an intro, like a process. Don't know that it's intended to, I mean, that's usually when you have a paragraph called purpose.
Yeah.
That's just like a description when the meat comes in.
Then I guess why not just put it all in one policy then?
And what's the problem with it again? Can you?
There's no policy.
Let's see, can I come look over your shoulder?
Yeah.
But I kind of like the broad, the broad statement of like, this is, this is the purpose of.
Just this paragraph.
Yeah, I think that it gives a wider groundwork for what follows.
All right, again, and maybe it was the formatting of how it got sent because, you know, it all got disjointed.
Probably not going to like my answer, that's the difference between a school committee level policy versus implementation of a policy at each level and details that go with it. So you don't set the program through the policy, you set that you have to have a program and then your practitioners develop the program and either have it approved through their program of studies or.
But this is essentially setting the program.
It's setting that this should be a component of schooling.
It's so broad. I mean, that's why.
Do we do that elsewhere?
You do, you have those broad statements about providing special education services. Like it's committing that, like, the district provides instruction on, on technology.
Okay, so if it's.
Because otherwise you, we could be a district that says, we don't want, we don't provide any, we're no tech school.
All right, so if it is indeed preface for the other ones, and it just didn't come across that way because of the formatting of this document, that makes some sense. All right, and then the last question I had, there are a bunch of federal and state laws about protection of student data. And I just, I just didn't know, they weren't listed in this section, but I don't know if we have it listed elsewhere or if that's a question you're going to ask M A S C about.
I mean.
What they choose to.
I would say we're trusting M A S C to, I put it where it's appropriate. So I see children's online privacy protection rule, so COPA and SIPA are referenced in I G N T C.
I also had the question, Jake, that if there were sort of at the federal level, changes to those laws, would that then make our policy no longer applicable if we're hinging on those laws?
Well, I assume they may see, M A S C would send us an update if there were updates at the federal level that impacted.
If they were referencing those.
Right.
Specifically.
So like the website and social media site specific legislation, access site specific, acceptable use site specific.
Right, I was just, I was just, I just wanted to make sure that, that the, particularly the state, but also the federal references on student data privacy were, were indeed referenced.
So why don't we go back, you, you want us to just take it, want to do your first read and go back and get answers? Or do you want to?
Again, I, I don't, I don't want to hold this up because of it. I think this is a question we can ask M A S C and maybe they have a good reason for not doing some of them. I don't know why, but, or they're in different sections that just aren't these, right?
Yep.
That we aren't, we just don't have in front of us.
So E H A A.
H A A.
I J N.
I don't, I don't care where it is, to be honest with you.
And you're, specifically you want to make sure that children's online privacy is.
There are a bunch, there are four or five federal and, or there are four and there are one, two, three, four state laws that talk about student privacy. I just want to make.
That aren't listed here.
I don't know if they're listed right in our, in our entire policy. That's my question is, do we list them somewhere? Or does M A S C reference them? That's, that was my question. Again, not holding this up, but I just wanted to make sure that we're following this.
I see that list.
Especially with AI and phones, I think we're going to be visiting these sections pretty regularly over the next five years.
Is there a way to get looped in on some Jake's feedback before meetings? You know, because then it counts as deliberation.
Yeah. And that's.
So the subcommittee receives. But there's no way that, like you sent out my notes on the subcommittees. Can you, in, in like, is it possible for Jake to send these notes to Pam that they can send this out?
We can do, we can. What I did was I asked everybody to send me their notes on subcommittee, you sent me notes.
Yeah.
Committee, so I added them to the, so I can compile them.
Yeah.
For review, you can't shoot them back and forth.
Yeah.
We just structured the subcommittee to take the inputs on the subcommittee policy, on the policies. That's why it went, why Jake's notes went to the subcommittee versus the whole group. But there are instances where we'll do the whole group feedback and then there are instances where we'll do feedback through process and policy supplement. Are we voting?
Yeah, so, so I appreciate you following up on those few items, but not, you know, these are all things looking ahead rather than toward this option.
Appreciate that.
And we want to make a motion to accept.
Yeah, I will make a motion to accept the proposed revisions and replacements to the to the use of technology.
Two, can you do a motion first to dispense with the two reads because they're updates of current policies and then do the move to accept?
I make a motion to. I make a motion to, um, despite dispense of the first read in recognition that this is a change in existing policy rather than an adoption of a new policy.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous?
I make a motion to accept the recommended technology policy updates as presented in our meeting packet for July 10th.
My second. Any discussion or questions?
Did that.
Well, that was, yeah, alright, any final questions? Or again, no? Okay, all those in favor? That's also unanimous?
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
They will be very happy.
We did something.
Oh, alright.
You don't like, I have a quick update. I don't have an extensive update, but am I next? Did I jump ahead?
Negotiations, so we need to know. I guess I can say that, uh, real quick, just on negotiations. And we can cover this a bit later as well when we talk about the work we need to do this year and how we kind of want to structure our year in our workshop. But, um, you know, there is the potential for the negotiations team to, you know, further reach out to, uh, the teachers association to discuss, you know, some questions we have about, right? But I'll just kind of leave it at that, right? Uh, you know, to continue to work as diligently as we can to keep our healthcare costs down across the board for both, uh, the school district itself as well as our teachers and the folks. So besides that, did you have anything on cake with negotiations?
Nothing for negotiating.
Pretty basic, yeah. We haven't, right?
I would say in addition to Chris's comment, which I agree with, and this might be more part of our priorities in organization, I would love for us to get into a proactive stance. We'll be in negotiations again the fall of 26. It would be wonderful if we could use portions of next year to look at some strategy and.
This coming year.
This coming year, 25, 26, to prepare for negotiating within 26, 27.
The year that we just started.
During this next coming school year, if we could prepare for the work for the following school year with the larger negotiation. Because we'll have the two units. And I think it will tie to budget discussions and if we're, we're seeing that as a vehicle for trying to address some issues. Just a, kind of putting the thought out there.
Yeah.
I'll go with a cup, just a very quick, um, update. It's been funny with the close of the budget so late in the year, we're still doing kind of the end of the year close out, while at the same time rolling in, trying to roll into the next year. So a lot of, um, my work over the past few weeks has been trying to find a interim principal for the middle school. I thought I was going to be able to provide you with a very detailed update today. I can just provide you with good news, which is we've identified a candidate. However, because it is a retired person who has been working, uh, Desi has to approve her to continue working into the year. So I'm hopeful that they might be able to close us out on that process. There's no guarantee. Uh, we have to submit, um, a record of all of the work we've done to post and review candidates and justify why the person we're recommending is the best fit. So that's, that was all done over the Fourth of July week and now we're kind of waiting for Desi to give us the okay. It's all the critical short to Amber. I, I sense we can be optimistic, but I don't want to over commit, um, in public. But, um, hopefully we'll have a nice detailed explanation going into next week.
That is still good news and a positive.
It is, it is great news and I'll say, um, when we talk a little bit about what we, the work we want to do next year, I think I'd like to continue the conversation about a potential administrative restructure as an option for growth. We were very late, so I won't make broad, draw any broad conclusions based on the pool of candidates we received. The number was okay, 24, but the qualifications weren't there. And I, in talking with networks, people are growing. It's harder and harder to fill some positions, um, because fewer, fewer people are looking to go into some of the administrative roles. I think we're dealing with a situation for many where you are increasing your work year, but your pay is not increasing, commensurately, uh, and it's, you know, you're in a better financial position for time and compensation if you stay in the classroom and people usually go into this job because they love being in the classroom. So, um, I think there are fewer draws for people. That's not to say if we, when we start early, we won't, I mean, we are a great school district. We attract a lot of candidates, so getting an early start will get us the best access. But I think it's going to be something we're wrestling with as we go forward. So just a different consideration. So hopefully I'll be able to provide everybody an answer at, by the beginning of next week.
And Pam, this is an interim person, so they're only going to serve for.
One year.
Correct.
Yeah. And the person we have been talking with has interim experience and it's a little bit of a different, it's a different mindset coming in when you're, when you know you're just there, uh, to help us move forward. So again, hopefully more details coming out next week on that. The other thing is, I'm sure, I don't know how many people were reading the newspaper over the Fourth of July weekend, but they did close the state budget. I don't know that Michelle's had time yet to kind of go through and see where we're up and where down. Back of the envelope, they settled the chapter 70 per head number higher than what we budgeted. They fully funded circuit breaker, but circuit breaker is a sped reimbursement, so that's totally dependent on our caseload. So there's no direct number on that. And the good news, there's good news on the chapter 70, but the Medicare conversation at the national level could have implications on some of the, um, some of the special ed reimbursements that we get on student. That a part of students', um, services can be charged to Medicaid or Medicare. So we're not quite certain how that's going to, so a little still up in the air. And I guess I would say on federal grants, um, there's been some splashy headlines of late. None yet directly impacting us. A lot of that $100 million holdback has to do with FY25. So this fiscal year money tied to ESSER, um, or pandemic relief dollars that could be spent over time and haven't been fully exhausted yet. They received notification that they did fund IDEA, which would be our biggest hit if that weren't funded. So on paper, we're okay. I'll caveat that with, who knows? I mean, it just, it's never know what's going to happen, so we're not counting on anything. I'll make the plug for this is why we have reserves. I think we calculated we're in the $450,000 to $500,000 reliance on reserves, excuse me, um, for programming. So if all federal funding got pulled or stalled, we have enough in our different reserve buckets to not have to do layoffs or stop anything. But it would put us in a pretty precarious position for FY27. So lot coming out from the state, a lot of headlines, just saying, right now we are still status quo from where we ended the year with some potential upside on the chapter seven.
Alright.
And that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So then with that, I think the only thing left is any general school committee comments on our business meeting, if anyone has any.
Pam, I had a quick one to pass on to you, which is that with the rollover to the new websites, the links to summer reading are no longer working. When was the last time checked? Uh, last night. So like, we had received, um, a PDF of it for my rising sixth grader. But for my rising eighth grader, we had received a link, um, in the last middle school newsletter that would bring us to the summer reading. And, um, of course, we're just now checking.
And they were working on it.
Isn't that a check you'd be useful?
They were working on it Monday. I thought they had it resolved. The, the issue is the folder is owned by Joanne and it's blocking people from getting into. So they're just kind of sorting it out. I will, while we transition into workshop, I will find, I will get.
So I could open the folder, I think the one, is it a Google Drive? I could open the Google Drive. What I couldn't open was a link in an email that went to the website. It looks like it directed first to the middle school.
So this is a site, okay, help me again. A link in an email that was sent by the middle school prior to the end of the school year. So they're linking to the old website.
Right.
Okay. Can you send me a copy of the email?
Yeah.
I have a quick thing, Michelle, I don't know if you've kind of heard us the whole time, but how are you doing? Did you have any quick comment?
Hi, um, no, I've been following along, no particular comment, but we will have, um, an update on where we stand with FY26 and where we're closing on 25 hopefully in the coming weeks.
Alright.
We hope your recovery is going well.
Yeah, you're looking good on video.
It's going, it's going. I'm feeling a lot better, feeling a lot better. So, yep. Just coming over some, some other hurdles, unexpected hurdles, but that's what happens. So doing good though.
Never a straight line, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Well, it's good to see you.
Yeah, no, I wish I was there. That was my plan to be there and, yep, that didn't happen.
Locked him off the rain today.
Yeah, I didn't know it was going to rain, but that's okay.
Alright, thank you, Michelle.
No, thank you.
Anyone else? I'll take a motion. You have any?
If you get more comments or like problems with the website, just keep sending them to me. So.
I did, I did mean to email.
Work in progress. Forgetting. Better than we expected, but not quite where we want it to be.
Fair. Alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Michelle.
I think we're adjourning to workshop. Just to clarify, we'll come, we can clarify.
That's what I meant, yeah. Adjourning to workshop. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.